Yeah.
I called the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Remind everybody to turn off or silence your electronic devices for the duration of the meeting. If you all please rise for the indication and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight to conduct the business of our great city, we ask for your continued blessings on all our people. Grant us the humility and willingness to help those who are less fortunate than us. Please hold up those who are ill and those who are troubled. Help us to reach out to them when we see someone in need and offer them the help that they need. Please continue to bless our city staff and protect our first responders as they work to protect us all. Please help us to remember that decisions we make every day affect others in so many ways. Guide us with your wisdom to make the right choice in all that we say and do. In your most holy name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. As everybody is aware, we have this tradition of the historic fact, and tonight that falls on Councilmember Chambers. Welcome back.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, tonight I thought I'd do something a little different with our historic facts. We're going to play a trivia contest. So I'm going to ask some questions. If you know the answers, shout it out, okay? Some of you I know know some of these answers, so don't be shy. Okay, and I'm jumping around. There's no method or madness or pattern to these. These are just different questions I thought of. I told you at one of our historic facts that Temple Terrace started as a volunteer fire department. I'm waiting for the chief to look up. Fire. Okay. That was fine. You got it. Okay. It was a volunteer department until the late 60s, early 70s. So I want to know, who was the last chief of the volunteers? Who was the last volunteer fire chief? James or Jim Bailey?
He was the first paid, too.
My next question is, who's the first paid fire chief of Temple Terrace? And yes, as we know the answer now, it was James Bailey. Same man. Who was the first police officer for the city of Temple Terrace? There's a very famous picture of him on a bicycle holding his revolver. It's been around forever, that picture.
DeMott, isn't it?
A.P. DeMott. Excellent. Okay. And that was in 1928. No one would get that. Okay. In the 70s, 80s, and 90s, Temple Terrace had a very prominent theater group. What was the name of that group?
Mass Theater.
You got it. Yay, Mass Theater. Okay, there were two members of that group, a famous couple that worked with Mass for many years. They lived in the city over 20 years. He was well-known playing Little Abner on Broadway and in the film version, and she was Miss Canada and appeared in many countless musical productions alongside her husband. What were their names? They all... Who said that? Peter Palmer was the guy?
Was it Anita?
Anita Farrell. Anita Farrell. Very good. Very good. They did a lot for the city. They participated a lot in the cities like Christmas Wonderland when they helped with caroling and stuff down in the park. Nice, nice people. Okay. What year did our city charter change authorizing our current city council manager form of government?
2016.
1955. Okay. In our city, what was the year that we had our first pooper-scooper ordinance? Nobody even guessing? 1984. These last two, I know at least somebody knows it in here. Where was the location of Temple Terrace's first grocery store?
Is it, was it the, where the Save-A-Lot is? Or Safeway? What is that, in that complex?
Old Lord and Land Arden?
Yes. Jim, got it. Yes. How many people been in that store? Okay. That was sad. Okay, and our last question, what year was Club Morocco built? First of all, do y'all know what Club Morocco was?
The Florida College.
Yes. Okay.
I should know the year. I went there.
I think it's 1924?
24, 23.
Well, the golf course was built, the hotel, in '22, so what year do you think? '23, 1923. Okay, so that's my report. That's my historic fact.
Thank you very much. Good job. Thank you. Okay, moving forward, excuse me, with the agenda, recognitions and proclamations, we have none, presentations none, board appointments none, consideration of the minutes for the July 15, 2025 meeting. If the minutes are acceptable, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No move.
Second.
Okay, motion second. All in favor, any discussion on the motion, everybody's good. All in favor, please, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, carries. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is persons wishing to be heard on items not on the agenda or items not on the consent agenda. Requests to address the Vice Mayor and Counsel in the back of the chambers, please complete the form and give it to the city clerk. Counsel agrees to a 30-minute time limit of all public comment to be continued at the end if there more time is needed. A three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public, and we ask speakers to come to the podium, state your name and city of residence. During the public comment items not on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, city manager and/or directors are in attendance and do not make, they do make note of these items and assure that they will, the comments are taken seriously and will be followed up on individually. So, let's see. We have item agenda number, this is an agenda item, agenda item, okay, these are all, I think.
Actually, this is number five. Yeah. So they are, who this?
Okay. All right, so the first one on the agenda, the first one to speak then would be Mr. Loeb.
Charles Loeb, Terrace Park. I want to talk about a couple of subjects tonight. First of all, the library sale. A library sale net of $1,415, and it had all kinds of diverse items on the lot. They're not just books, but puzzles, games, and pictures. So, and there was a lot of action going on. The main thing I do want to talk about, though, tonight is, because I'm not going to be here on, I'm not going to be here August 11th, is I want to talk about comments on the water. First of all, I have a consult, for those people who don't know, the consultants are here. Secondly, the area received $21 million out of a big settlement on that. Of course, that's the whole area, not here in Temple Terrace. The consultants are here to deal with a master plan. I'm glad they're going to go that direction on that, that the city already is acting toward, going toward a master plan. I do, however, think that idea is that we should be going and looking toward ideas and really be aggressive about getting ideas from other cities, not only within Florida, but within the nation. Last year, there was a legal cities meeting, and it was here in Tampa, but this year it'll be someplace different. It was in the middle of November. The more ideas you get and the more contacts you make, maybe you could all can find money, too. So I did want to mention that. Perhaps one other idea I have on this, on the water, has a sort of a silver lining, what I hope will be a silver lining, that you all have a big meeting on August 11th. Why? Because I hope a lot of, we're all kind of in this together, and I want people to realize that. I'm hoping that maybe people will be able to meet their neighbors, especially if they're diverse backgrounds, and get, maybe develop friendships, perhaps work together or something like that, and be able to develop bonding relationships that will help draw this community closer together. Being, I do have a little extra time, I do have several other announcements that I do want to make. First of all, that on August 7th, if I read that sign right, which is Thursday, they'll be working on 52nd and Fowler Avenue. They'll be putting up, putting up that traffic light, so if anybody goes there regularly, be aware that the, that FDOT will be working on that, on doing that. Secondly, that on July, July 16th, for those who don't know and didn't read it in the paper, that they're still going to try to work with University Mall. Former Mayor Buck Corners trying to get involved with this, and they're still going to try to do things such as having buses all night. Of course, what type of buses that they will have is another matter, whether they would have premium transit buses, vans, or something like that on demand, but I happened to notice that within the article. And finally, I did want to mention about the Senior Expo. It's going to be next month, September 19th, from 9 to 12, and that's pretty much all I have to say, and I thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Okay, next we have Mr. Neil Oakes.
Welcome.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm Neil Oakes. I live at 6123 Liberty Avenue. Been there since about 1982, 83. And I have a motel next door to me, and I think it's a result of the short-duration rental. Legislation was passed in 2011, but we have an individual that bought that house, and he's converted it either to five or six bedrooms. And I know this because you can count all the exterior doors around the house, and they all have little porch lights, just like a motel would. And he's taken almost half his front yard, dug up the grass, and put in a mixture of limestone gravel, something for parking. Now, I believe he's got a cease and desist order on his front door now where that's been, they put a stop to that. He also, about a month ago, took down two oak trees in the front yard so he could have room for the parking, you know? When you have that many bedrooms, you got to have a lot of parking. And, you know, I know this is a problem statewide. A lot of cities are having problems with these short-term rentals, and I'm just hoping there's something that Temple Terrace can do about it, because this is going to spread. If you think about it, they can make a lot of money. Now, I bought a home in a single-family residence because I wanted to raise my kids there, and it's been great. But I've got a, basically, I've got a commercial enterprise next door. I'm not an attorney. I don't understand how zoning can allow that, how you can have commercial enterprises in a residential area. I mean, if I wanted to start up a little, you know, store or a cigar shop or something, I couldn't do it. But, you know, it's one thing to have a rental home and be a member or join Airbnb and rent out that home for a week, two weeks, or anything under 30 days to a family. They come here on a vacation. That's great. They can go to the beach, they can go to Busch Gardens, that's fine. But when you take a house and you separate it into five, six different units, rental sections, and you rent it to all different people, that's no longer a home. That's a motel or a boarding house or whatever you want to call it, next door. So, I just, you know, hoping you can come up with some kind of solution, because we certainly don't want this spreading through Temple Terrace, because it's going to tend to lower property values. You know, if you're looking to buy a home to raise a family, you don't want a motel next door. Now, you know, I just don't want to see people selling, moving, and this becoming more widespread, because Temple Terrace has been a great place to live and raise my kids. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the list is Laura, sorry, Laura.
Bolser.
Bolser.
Good evening, city manager and council and vice mayor. I'm here to talk about the town hall. I'm not happy to be here. I don't want to be here. I have a lot of other things I need to be doing, and quite frankly, I feel like everyone up here has wasted our time. We voted on a town hall. You guys voted it. That's for the residents. Thank you for not responding to my email I sent you yesterday. You know how I feel about this, and I know I'm not your friend. You don't like me. That's okay. I'm not here to make friends.
Can we not direct individuals onto the dais? This is for public comment, not to attack anybody, please.
Yes. So, we voted on, you guys voted on pass a town hall, and then there's all these email exchanges. How many backdoor conversations? There's an email that the next person can read the email verbatim that was written by the city manager, and so how many backdoor conversations has there been proposing a different format? This is time for the residents. We have a lot of questions. This is a very big issue, a serious issue. There's a lot of people in the community that are very upset besides just me. A lot. A lot of messages I get, employees of the city, employees of the police department, fire department, library, schools, they're all afraid about losing their jobs, so they don't want to speak up. I'm not afraid. I'm not here to be friends, so I don't care. I will speak up. I don't care whose toes I step on in the process either. This is a very important issue. If things have not been transparent with us, starting with that water report, there needs to be accountability and transparency, and these emails back and forth proposing changes to the town hall is not transparent, not in any way, shape, or form. So I would like to see town hall go on as planned with another one for presentations that was also discussed and voted on at the past last council meeting, July 15th. The residents, we have done a lot of organizing, people hitting the pavement, making photocopies on their own dime, visiting residents, making sure, getting the word out, because the water report didn't get, half the residents didn't get it, and it was never sent out again, to my knowledge. So people have thanked me. The ones that did get it, we didn't understand it. We didn't know what it means. Nothing. There was no call to action on the cover page, the summary. It said, you know, "We're pleased to present the 2024 annual water report." That leaves people thinking there's nothing wrong with it, and there was a lot wrong with it. So we're organizing speakers. We're going to be taking questions. We're beginning, having a meeting of residents prior, so that way we're more organized and we're not having a bunch of repetition. We don't want to have a bunch of repetition of people saying the same things either. So we may have 20 people that want to speak. Some don't, they're afraid to speak. They'd rather have someone else speak and ask their questions.
Thank you very much.
They may need more than five minutes.
Next on the list is Tara. If you're going to talk about the town hall meeting, that's an agenda item, so that really isn't a...
Well, it's water and town hall, but that's fine.
Well, if it's town hall, then let's take it back to the, when is an agenda item, if we could? Is that going to be appropriate for that discussion, Mr. City Attorney?
Well, certainly, the town hall part would probably be more appropriate when that item comes up, but if she wishes to speak on water...
That's fine. If you could just talk about water by itself, it's a town hall meeting, we're going to, we're having a discussion on that later on.
Point of order, Mr. Vice Mayor, just out of curiosity, is it not also permissible to speak on both items consecutively, three minutes of public comment? She might also wish to speak for three minutes during the water section?
But it's an agenda item. She can talk about the water now.
What I mean is, she can speak in public comment about the water issue and then also for three minutes.
I just said she can do that.
Then I understand. Just checking.
As I said, if you want to speak about the water, that's fine, but without the town hall comment, excuse me, town hall meeting, that's later in the agenda. That's up to you. How do you want to proceed?
So, yeah, my name is Tara McDonnell. I have been pounding the pavement. I'm one of those. I've been to over 20 businesses and numerous residents. Most residents I have been to have no idea. They did not get the information. I've made sure I've provided it, since on page four and a half, you stated that we There has been so much. I've been to the dentist this week. We have severe gum disease. I've lost two teeth this year. I have now, now I've gotten Water Boy in my house. I can't afford to have the whole water system. I am now paying extra for Water Boy delivery. I have a son who has severe eczema that it's been in the last three to four years, and doctors cannot explain it. He's a severe hand washer as well. We've got numerous things I'm taking in my household. I'm trying to raise two good humans. I'm trying to work. I serve the military every day. I shouldn't have to worry about my water. I don't understand why this is such, such a backdoor thing. It doesn't seem like it's anybody's bringing it to the main attention and allowing us as residents to be the ones to help you with this. We want to help. We are voices. You can hear us. We're loud. We will speak for you. We will help you, but we also need help from y'all. I don't have time for this. I've got children at home that I need to be home with, but I also have to worry about, Carter, don't use that water. Go ahead, use my Water Boy that I'm paying $73 a month for now. I shouldn't have to do that. I can barely pay my water bill. And it's just, I shouldn't have to worry about putting extra things in my home when it should be safe for me to have the water. How long have you known about it? Because I guarantee it's longer than what has been dealt with. My health issues are three to four years now. You ask other people, they're going to say that as well. Many people have told me, huh, I wonder if it's the water issue. You know this affects the pools. This affects your tooth brushing, your hand washing. Our bodies are made up of, what, 80% water? I am 50 years old. I don't care. I don't have many years left. My children do, and now I have to protect them from that. I shouldn't have to. That's something I shouldn't have to worry about as a parent. And you guys have no, it doesn't seem like there is no, any type of, I haven't even heard, like, an apology, like, we're sorry that we have, that we might have failed you or we didn't know about this, or we haven't done adequate testing. There has been no, it doesn't seem like there's any sympathy or any type of thought or any type of comments from you that make us feel secure that it's going to be handled, because this has been going on longer than just a few months. I guarantee it, and I think you all know it as well.
Thank you. Your comments are appreciated. Mr. Bayer, will you be reaching out to Mr. Oakes on, or was, somebody, not you necessarily, but somebody?
Yes, in fact, I've spoken to Mr. Oakes earlier.
Okay, good. Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, moving on, consent agenda. If the consent agenda is acceptable, undertake a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion or appear none? All in favor, please, the intemperors, sing aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Public hearings, ordinance, and resolutions. We have a resolution to approve the renewal of the Microsoft Office licenses. Information Technology Sally Cabrera and Finance Director Jim Ingram will explain. Welcome.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. We are requesting approval for the purchase of our Microsoft Office 365 licensing, maintenance, and support services totaling $120,718.22. This ensures that the city staff members have continuous access to essential productivity tools. This year's license renewal includes 100 licenses for Office G1, which is for online applications only, 245 licenses for Office G3, which is a full desktop version for administrative purposes, five licenses for Office G5, which is advanced security, compliance, and analytics tools, as well as all the other items, cloud email services with archiving and e-discovery, SharePoint for secure document collaboration, automatic updates for server, operating systems, and SQL. The contract covers a period from September 1st, 2025, through August 31st, 2026, and the purchase will be executed through Software House International using pricing from National Contract Omni Partners contract number 2024056-02. This is a three-year contract renewed annually. Funding for this purchase will come from account number 00111215133428. And Finance Director James Ingram is here to speak about the funding for this item.
Mr. Ingram, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Jim Ingram, Finance Director. Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. As you know, Microsoft software is critical to our operations and is included in our budget every year. Because the licensing term each year begins September 1st, 2025, we are required to pay before the beginning of our fiscal year on October 1st, and this was the way it was set up 10 years ago when we started. So to be transparent, we wanted to make sure you understood that due to accounting procedures and the majority of the costs being incurred during fiscal, the following fiscal year, in this case, 2026, accounting principles will require us to book the expenditure in fiscal year 2026. So this cost is included in our proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. So it is in every fiscal year budget for this Microsoft license renewal, and it is So it is in every fiscal year budget for this Microsoft license renewal, and it is included in the 26 budget. So we just want to make sure that that was clear. And if you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer that, or anything else. There she is, Valerie.
Anything else, Valerie, okay. Is there any public comment on the item? Appearing to be none, councils, or any, council have any questions for staff?
So I know that we're looking at like a financial system module that, that has a lot of record-keeping aspects to it-
Correct.
-as well as we're talking about for our records retention, getting a system that will help make our records retention and recollection of those records easier and more organized. When will that, those products work with Microsoft Office? Or will we need to be looking at something that bridges the gap between the two?
I think, I know the answer to that, but I'll let the IT director answer.
Yes, they will work with Microsoft Office products.
Okay, so everything will be compatible whenever we do decide what modules we select and what programs we go with for records retention?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and this covers, is this, everybody renews at the same time, or are there, are there any staggered licenses?
For us, everyone renews at the same time, if we purchase additional licenses, we pay the extra so that everyone renews at the same time, and it's always on the 1st of September.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, appearing to be none, appearing to be no other questions. Entertain a motion to adopt the resolution approving the purchase of the software licensing and maintenance service amount $120,718.22 for the continued renewal and use of Microsoft Office licensing.
I move to approve, since you read it all.
Yes.
Motion to second, any comment on the motion? Appearing to be none, all in favor, please, the intecapres sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, likes, signs? Motion carries, thank you very much. Okay, resolution approving the purchase of an Ultimate Bagger from the Sandbag Store LLC, Public Works Director Jason Warrenfelt will explain.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm here to present a resolution for consideration regarding the approval of a specialized equipment purchase for the City of Temple Terrace. This resolution seeks authorization for the purchase of an Ultimate Bagger from Sandbag Store LLC, a sole-source vendor, in the amount of $56,124. The Ultimate Bagger is a high-efficiency sandbagging machine able to produce 1,250-pound bags an hour at maximum capacity. This unit will enhance the city's emergency preparedness and response efforts, particularly in flood mitigation and hurricane readiness. It's an automated design significantly, its automated design significantly increases the bagging speed and reduces labor costs and physical strain on our staff during emergency operations. Due to the proprietary nature of this equipment, Sandbag Store LLC is a sole-source provider for this product and parts associated with it. We believe this investment will provide long-term operational benefits and strengthen our resiliency during severe weather events. Included in this purchase is a training allowance with the manufacturer representative to educate our staff for the safe and efficient operation of this equipment. Expected lead time for this unit is seven to 10 days from the purchase order approval. Funding for this purchase will come from the general fund unassigned fund balance. And as you recall, during the budget hearing, council directed staff to proceed with this purchase ahead of the FY '26 budget, so that's what this is for. At this time, I request the city council's approval of the resolution, stand for any questions.
Any comments for the public? Please come up.
Is this Charles Loeb, Harris Park? So I was thinking, your residents, are you going to be having more sandbags in the future because of this equipment? In other words, you'll be able to reduce more sandbags, or how, and if so, how many more?
Thank you. So if, use Hurricane Milton as an example, if I recall the number correctly, the staff put out about 7,000 sandbags for that storm, and it took greater than eight hours to do that. So with 1,200 at max capacity, even if we operate at 1,000 an hour, we will be able to achieve a greater quantity in a shorter time period, which would allow for more bags to be available for the community.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from staff? There'll be counsel.
So I have a couple, one, is this a mobile item, or will it be at a fixed location?
It, it is, it can be either. Our, our intent is to operate, this is preliminary intent, is to operate at Public Works to complete the sandbag process, load them onto a unit and take them to the 301 complex for distribution. Now, again, if the storm, storms back-to-back between Hurricane Milton, that was a short process, this piece of equipment can be loaded on a trailer, taken to 301 complex and be operated there as well.
Okay.
It is completely self-contained, has its own power source.
Okay, so I, I know that we still have outstanding FEMA reimbursement, and I know it can take some time, and, and I know that we did have a lot of damage and, and cleaning expenses, et cetera, that we hope to be reimbursed for a number of them. So when that FEMA reimbursement comes in, can any, will that be applied directly to the expenses that we have had, that we've incurred for the past hurricanes, or will that reimbursement essentially be available to offset current year expenses?
Councilmember, I think I want to have Mr. Ingram come up and address that directly.
The FEMA reimbursement, we are not, well, let me try to answer what I think you're asking, and you can correct me if I don't have it right. First of all, for the sandbagger, they're, they won't reimburse for that, that's, and we did try to get some state funding that we were not able to get. However, the other part about offsetting costs, with the FEMA reimbursement, we are not able to book a revenue until we have an obligation from FEMA saying, we will pay you this amount. So we are getting close, but we haven't received any for Milton yet. It may not be till fiscal year '26. What that amount will do will help replace some of the money that we did have to spend that lowered our general fund, well, actually, all the funds were impacted. But it will help replace some of the funds that we lost due to having to spend them on Milton, particularly the debris monitoring and pickup, that, that's the biggest expense. So that may not come till fiscal year '26, and we may not be able to book it until fiscal year '26.
Okay, so that, but this equipment is not a reimbursable expense, it's, but it's going to be a much better use of our employee time and resources?
Exactly.
Any questions?
No, it was answered.
Excuse me, yeah, the FEMA, that, that, that transaction will be encumbered and receivable set up, and then when they pay us back, it'll be reduced receivable and put it back in cash, that's what it's going to be, so, okay. With no other questions, is there a motion to adopt the expenditure of the Ultimate Bagger LLC?
Move to approve the purchase of an Ultimate Bagger from Sandbag Store LLC.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion on the, on the motion? Appearing to be none, all in favor, please, the intecapres sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much, you might as well stay there. Okay, next item is a resolution approving a change order to the CHA Consulting, Inc. Agreement for the 2025 Water Treatment Facilities Master Plan. Public Works Director Jason Warrenfelt, you will explain.
I have a point of order to raise regarding this item, because it is an important item, this is 8C, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Okay. I think this was improperly noticed, so we have to remedy that by making a motion to suspend the rules to adopt this item formally, because it was submitted past the cutoff date, which is Friday at 5:00 PM, this was changed at 5:32 PM, and then again on Monday at 7:20 PM. So if we're to respect Rule 5 of the procedure that we've adopted, then we're going to have to adopt this motion formally from a floor vote, which is no problem, but it is the proper way to do it, in my view.
Mr. Miller, your comments?
Apparently missed the 5 o'clock Friday deadline, but what it did is, otherwise it would have come on as a walk-on without any notice. So it didn't go on to the agenda and was out there for people to know about since Friday. However, if in an abundance of caution, I have no issue with the idea of suspending the rules and making sure that this change order is approved, you know, in, in a manner that is good with city council and, you know, in accordance to what my, you know, the rules. So if, if you want to make that motion, you are welcome to do so, but I do want to make it clear that if, even though it missed that deadline, it could have come on as a, as a walk-on, and we, you know, agenda item, but what we did do, just so everyone knows, is there was plenty of notice of it being out there before today. But if you would like to proceed, go ahead.
I have a question for the city attorney, did it, did it come on as a walk-on?
No, it has not, I'm saying it could have-
Right.
And we're presenting it now.
Yes, sir, so if it failed to meet the notice requirement on a timely manner, and it didn't come on as a walk-on, then the third option is adopting it from the floor, which is what I propose, correct?
I said you can move forward with that if you-
So is that an abundance of caution, or is that just the proper way of doing it?
You may proceed, sir.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to adopt 8C agenda item formally into our agenda for consideration tonight, which is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida approving a change order to CHA Consulting, Inc. for general engineering services for work related to the water treatment facility study, authorizing the city manager to execute a change order in the amount of $223,360 for a total purchase order amount of $523,335. Funds to be paid from account 410-1921-5333199, providing effective date.
Second.
Now, this is just to add it to the, to the agenda, correct? This is not a motion for the, for the change order itself, okay?
And I'd also like to amend my motion for that to be adopted by unanimous consent, so that we don't have to go through a formal vote process. Unanimous consent, if anyone, if no one objects, we can just slide through without having a vote, unanimous consent.
I'll call for a vote, thank you very much. Okay, any, any comment on the, on the motion?
Yes, I have a question. Since we have to add this to the agenda, do we have to hear it again? We just heard something that's kind of not on the agenda in this, do we have to hear this again?
You haven't heard anything on this?
I'm afraid I don't understand.
We haven't heard-
Well, he's just talked about this item, but it hadn't been voted on due to the-
Well, no, that was the bagger item, it's just coming up, the CHA-
I apologize for being ignorant, sorry.
All right.
I got it, I seen it out there too much, sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to add the resolution to the agenda, so, so therefore, all in favor, please, the intecapres sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Fine, all right, Mr. Warrenfelt, you're recognized to address this issue, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm here to present a resolution requesting approval of a change order to CHA Consulting, Incorporated for additional engineering services related to the water treatment facility study. This resolution will allow for additional services devoted to analyzing our treatment process to reduce PFOS and related contaminants in our drinking water system, to include consistent expert-level water sampling and interim treatment feasibility study, along with a pilot study program and potential funding support. This request is to approve the change order in the amount of $223,360 to support the ongoing technical analysis, planning, and design services needed to advance the study of our current water treatment infrastructure. This change order will bring the total purchase order amount to $523,335. Funding is available for this and will be paid from the Utility Reserve Fund, staff recommends the approval, and here with me tonight is our professional staff from CHA that have a brief presentation, and together we will be available to answer questions.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, thank you, Alan Detloff with CHA. Is the presentation going to be, hold up, it's me, it's you, okay, got it. All right, very good, thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. So I'm, I'm Alan Detloff with CHA Consulting. This is not advancing. Oh, over there. The other on. So as was mentioned, we've, we've put together just a brief presentation to give a little background on, on, on the, the project, what we originally scoped to do, and then this modification to the scope that we're, that we're talking about more specifically here this evening. So we're going to, we're going to cover that, that background, a little bit about our expertise, introduce some members of our team and their background, and then share some of our past experience on, on, on similar projects. So the city recently hired CHA to develop an updated water treatment facility master plan. This is a, a study that looks at capacity, looks at treatment processes, looks at emerging, you know, contaminants of, of concern, evolving regulations, things of that nature, to, to kind of look at the facility on, you know, big-picture standpoint and confirm or, or propose improvements so that the city's facilities will continue to serve the city and the, and the public into the future. So the scope included, as I said, emerging contaminants and associated future regulations to stay ahead of, of compliance mandates, among other things. Sample results have indicated the presence of PFOS in the system, so the scope is, is now being amended to include PFOS-specific sampling, testing, and vetting of interim and long-term treatment alternatives. So CHA is a national firm, we were established in 1952, we're a full-service, multi-discipline firm, we do transportation, aviation, but our local team and, and really most of our staff in Florida, which is comprised of over, over 250 staff in the state, are really very heavily focused on utility infrastructure. So water treatment facilities, wastewater treatment facilities, pipelines, pump stations, conveyance, things of that nature. We, we do hold several rankings on the E and R, which is the Engineering News Record, which is a publication that ranks firms, so just, you know, as a, as a statement of credibility, we, we do hold rankings on that list. And with our local office is, is where myself and the two gentlemen that are here with me work out of, which is right over on, on Rocky Point. So we've, we've put together an, an expert team, so we are highly specialized in, in water treatment process, and you'll, you'll see here in a little bit on a, on a future slide that we, we do have quite a bit of experience on, on PFOS. It's a, it's a concern really nationally that's gaining more and more attention as, as we learn more about it. So we, we leverage modeling, performance data, regulatory trends, things like that, you know, again, we're a national firm, we look at these systems all over the place, so we've got a, a deep bench of, of experience and data to draw from. And then again, you know, our team, the majority of our team is, is here local, so we offer a very, a very client-centric focus. So I'm Alan Detloff, I'm principal and in charge, I, I hold a position that's similar to a, a regional manager-type role here, so I'm, I'm more on the operations side, making sure that we have the appropriate resources assigned to this project and to the city to make this a success. Chandra Mysore could not be here this evening, but he is, he's really the, the brawn behind, or the brains behind this effort. He's a technical advisor, he's got over 40 years of experience, he is our national One Water Discipline Lead, so this is, this is what he does day in and day out, and he's got a long resume already of, of working to help address PFOS issues, and, and has a lot of special, specialization in the types of treatment that we'll be looking at under this study. Ed Talton is our project manager, he's got 36 years of experience, he does a lot of hydraulic modeling, a lot of water quality modeling, very well-versed in, in treatment processes and things of that nature. And then lastly, Bart Jones, who's, who's here with me tonight, he's the Client Service Manager, or what we call the Client Advocate for Temple Terrace, so he's, you know, in a- for Temple Terrace. So he's, you know, in a similar role to me to make sure that we have the appropriate resources assigned to make this a success for you all and, and for your water customers. So these are a few examples of, of recent PFOS experience. City of Vero Beach, you know, we, we're designing a, a treatment facility over there for, actually it's going into construction right now, where they had similar issues, wanted us to, to help evaluate and make sure that this new facility would be able to effectively treat the water. They're, they're served by 30 groundwater production wells. So a similar source of water to the city, a, a larger scale, a larger number of wells, but a very similar setup. Town of Bel Air here, more locally, we did a, an RO pilot there, a reverse off-motion pilot. This is one of the treatment processes that, that, you know, that may be recommended to help, you know, address this PFOS issue. Boya was extremely, very heavily involved in that. He, he was out there in the field, you know, boots on the ground for that, for that pilot. And then the Veolia Water, Stanton Water Treatment Plant. Again, this was a, a project that was very early when, when PFOS, we were, you know, we were just learning about it. You know, its prominence or prevalence wasn't, wasn't yet really known. But this is a 30 mgd facility that we, we did pilot testing and things of that nature during the design process to, to help mitigate PFOS. So I, that was quick and dirty, but just wanted to give a little bit of, of highlight as to, you know, what we're doing and how, how our firm is, is prominent in, in this. And we stand ready to, to serve the city and, and again, make this project a success for, for all involved. Happy to take any questions you all may have.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody, any public comment on the, on the motion? Mr. Loeb?
Yeah.
Please come to the podium.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering, both past and future. First of all, in terms of the past, did you hear the comments from the July 15 meeting and what, including what the city manager said over on this, on this topic?
I have not, no. Not personally.
No. Anybody in your staff or anything like that?
I'm, I'm.
The other thing is, are you all going to be available on August 11, including your expert, to listen to everybody coming to the town hall meeting?
Yes, we will be there.
And that includes your expert, man? You were talking about, it's sort of the brains and...
Yes.
Is there any other comment on, on the resolution? State your name.
Laura Bell, sir. I would like to know, please, if you could elaborate a little bit more on your experience and what municipalities have you actually lowered their, their PFOS and their PFOS, and to what levels were you able to get them down to? And I, that's one question. And my second question I'll ask right away and I'll sit down is I'd like to know why a second or third quote or opinion wasn't obtained. I didn't see anything in emails. I, I don't know if there was or not, but with such an important issue and such a very expensive endeavor that is going to take us even further, I guess I'd like just more clarification as to why there wasn't more quotes and opinions, and then more on what you can do and have had experience doing and where you got levels, too. I know this is like a part, just a part of the process, because I understand it's a much bigger, more expensive venture. So also to gauge a better understanding in layman's terms, since we're not schooled in water and we're not professionals as residents in this, I'd appreciate if you could just explain that a little bit better.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I, I don't, I don't have, I'm not the technical expert on, on the PFOS. So I can't speak tonight to what levels we have, we have successfully, you know, gotten to with, with various treatment processes. So that, but that is something that we could be prepared to speak to at the town hall, if that's appropriate, appropriate venue for that.
Okay, so I have another comment. Question then?
Okay.
If, then what, maybe I'm just, maybe I just don't get it. What is their proposed funding approval supposed to do? Because I thought I heard you mention PFOS, but maybe I missed, mistaken.
We are, we are going to do a, a study. So we are going to sample water from all of the city's wells.
Gotcha.
We're going to sample water in the, not in the distribution system, but from the water treatment plants. In fact, we have already done a round of sampling. We're going to do three more rounds of sampling and then evaluate based on that appropriate treatment processes and how they will best fit in with the city's existing water treatment facilities.
Gotcha. Okay. So are you also then with one of the labs, or as I think there's about, according to the Health Department, there's only about five labs in the state of Florida that actually do this type of testing? Do you do that type of testing, or you shop it out?
We are using, is it Europens?
Yeah, Europens.
Yes. So one of the, one of the, one of the well-known and accepted labs.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Mr. Bay.
To address Ms. Spoelstra's question about the process. So it's an important issue, so we're moving quickly on this issue. CHA was one of our existing consultants, and they were obviously the consultant that was doing our water master plan. So what we, as the gentleman mentioned, they were going to look at this as part of the water, water master plan. We've, we've expanded the scope for this process and we've accelerated it. So that's the reason why we've, CHA is doing this. Now, if we, if we wanted to do something separately, it's not as simple as simply getting quotes. There's a process that you have to go through. We are trying to keep this process moving as quickly as possible. As the gentleman mentioned here, they have qualifications. They're nationally recognized. So I don't have any doubts as to their ability. Again, we are trying to move this very, very fast.
And if I understand, and, and this is a change order to an existing agreement with, we have with them for the overall analysis of the water treatment plant. So.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, that's, any other public comments? Okay. Council questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I do have a few questions. So one would be, as you're going through the overall process of water treatment system analysis, will you be including the possibility of annexation or the potential that the city would add to the size and, as part of your analysis? Or, or does it matter because we already have any land we would annex in our water delivery system?
May I, may I try to address that question?
Please, please.
So, yeah, I think you answered the question yourself at the end there. So our utility service area goes beyond our borders. It goes to the east of the city, not quite to 301, but it goes quite a ways out. So we provide water. Sort of, we're a regional provider of water. We would obviously take into account the capacity. So we have, we have a basically four to five million gallon a day average. We can pump up to nine based on our permit. Is that, is that correct? Can you just?
We're permitted for nine.
Permitted for nine.
More than that off the well.
Right. So we're going to be looking at all of that as part of this process. And I think that'll really be the telling sign, because that, that top-end capacity is what we would basically be able to serve future customer base.
Okay. And then as far as system, the, the system that you're, are you looking just at hardware or actually like construction, or do you also help establish the system for testing, like best practices for the testing policies that we would need to establish and training for staff? Or are you, are you just going to be focusing on the physical plant?
We're, we're looking at, at all the above. So we, we've developed a, a testing protocol already for the, specifically for this issue. Now, not necessarily for, for city staff into the future, although it could be adopted for that, you know, whether it's more frequent testing or different locations or whatever. But yes, we've developed a testing protocol to support this analysis that we're doing, to give us the information that we need to make, you know, informed recommendations to city staff. So we'll be looking at not only interim treatment solutions of something that can be deployed very quickly and knock the, knock the, you know, the PFOS down, but then long-term. You know, the, the, the one that's easiest and fastest to deploy right now might not be the best long-term solution, looking at, you know, cost of operation and maintenance and things. So we'll be looking at that then more for a permanent solution to make sure we get the right, you know, the right fit.
Okay. So that, that kind of takes me to another question, and that is, are there different solutions for different sources of water? Meaning, we, we have deep wells and that's, that's our source of water. It's not surface water. And we don't have any direct knowledge of any specific contaminants. We have no commercial or manufacturing or anything near any of our wells. So there's nothing that's, that says where, where any of the contaminants might be coming from. They're there from no, from unknown sources, basically. But so are there different treatment methods that work better with specific sources of water, wells versus surface water, or?
I, I would be speculating if I were to answer that. That, that, you know, Chandra, who I, I mentioned earlier, he's, you know, again, he's the horsepower. That's a better question for him to answer. We can certainly, you know, ask him for some feedback on that and, and provide that, you know, in a follow-up, if that's okay, or, or for further discussion at the town hall. You know, it, again, if I were to, if I were to make a statement on that right now, it would be, it'd be speculation. I'd rather defer.
Okay. And I just have one more question.
Okay.
And it's more of a, a request for the town hall meeting. I don't, I know you've said you've done a round of testing, and I don't expect that one specific round will tell you really anything, because I know it needs to be a series of testing. But if it's, if at all possible, when you come to that town hall meeting, if you can have whatever information you are able to tell people that your testing may have shown, or, and also as well as what methods that you've seen success, per the earlier question, what you've seen success with in other areas and the levels maybe that you've been able to achieve with other systems, that would be very helpful, I think, for, and for people to understand. And then also to, if you can tell people the timing that you think we might have further information to, you know, for the public. So.
Sure. Okay.
I'm Barton Jones. I'm a senior principal engineer for CHA and your client service manager. Respecting PFAS, it's a ubiquitous compound. It's found in groundwater and surface water. There's normally three technologies that we look at for, for the removal of PFAS from whatever source it is. It's activated carbon, ion exchange, or membrane filtration. And as you move through the scales from activated carbon to membranes, it gets more expensive capital cost and more expensive for operation and maintenance cost. So some of what we will be doing during the course of this assignment is determining, based on your water, what would be the best optimal technology that we can use to remove the PFAS and get you into compliance with the regulations. So that's, that's the purpose. Compliance is measured by a run-in average of quarterly samples over, over a year. And we just completed the first sample. We do not have the results back yet. We may have them before the 11th. And if we do, we'll be happy to share what those results were and our interpretation of those results. Thank you.
I have a public question for me.
No. Did you, public, public comments over. Okay.
I can't ask a question?
No, ma'am. Not at, not at this, not at this, not at this point. I'm sorry. At this point.
Wow, thanks.
Any other council questions?
Just a few. Would any one of you be willing to express in relative terms how challenging this might be for Temple Terrace? Is it very hard, medium, low, relative to the other projects that you've worked on? Are there any peculiarities or items that stand out to you in that respect?
Not, I think based on what we know right now, I'm not aware of anything that's, you know, a particular nuance that will make this more challenging than the next one or the last one, you know, for that matter.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. And I also wanted to ask, I've, I've looked at some of the information that's been provided to me about these, and again, sorry for the non-technical vocabulary, these disposal wells, I guess. They seem to be very expensive. Is it, in your experience, common for communities to share such infrastructure? So one might dig the disposal well and then multiple communities will make use of it to save money, or?
I, you know, I wouldn't, I would not say it's typical, but I, but it does happen. So I'd say it's in the realm of possibility, yes, to be looked at.
And in, and in your analysis, I'm hoping you'll look at opportunities to save costs by sharing major infrastructure with other area, entities in the area, hopefully?
Sure, yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll look, if, if there's something that comes to mind that would be a, a cost-saving measure, would suit you better and help somebody, you know, in adjacent municipality or whatever, absolutely, that's something we would, we would bring forward.
Thank you. And this is my last question. In your experience, what, what will typically be done in terms of financing, if that is in your area of expertise and knowledge?
Well, and that's, that's an important scope item that, that we haven't talked a whole lot about, but we do have a scope item in this to, to support the city in identifying funding sources. So whether, you know, it's, it's grants that are available for this kind of work, or a revolving fund loan, or something of that nature. So that, that is something that, that we'll be looking at to help identify potential funding sources for the city.
Great. Okay. And just as a concluding comment, thank, thank you to the city manager and to you also for arranging all of this on relatively short notice. And, and, you know, I've, I've dealt with many contractors, and I know it's unusual to be able to get someone to commit like this with very little lean time. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, I have a few questions.
I have a very important question.
Please, please.
I'd like to know why I'm not allowed to ask it. I'd like you to cite the law or the rule that I'm not allowed to ask. You opened the floor for public questions before for that speaker. Now there's a second speaker from the same company, and I have questions that council isn't asking. So please cite the rule or law why I'm not allowed to ask a question.
Because we've already closed the public comments section. Public comment was held earlier, and now we're councils asking questions. Okay?
Okay, so, but this gentleman is speaking differently than the first gentleman from CHA, and he's not, I don't understand why I can't ask a question. It's a different person. So why should that be closed?
Because it is.
Okay. So you want to shut the public up, and I have a, I have a question to ask.
No, no, just shut the public up.
You're shutting me up. You're shutting me down.
I have not asked my questions. I have questions also. Okay? So, give my train of thought back. The averaging that goes on, okay, the, the reporting is a rolling average of four quarters, okay? And that, that, that's, that's established throughout. We've had one testing for one snapshot point in time. That's correct, that you, that you've seen, that you've seen, that came from our testing earlier in, in the year. When you come back, if your, if your results are available, would you rely upon those to continual rolling average, or would you want to start fresh from new sets of data? I'm not even sure who did our original testing. Would that, would that be fair to do that, or is that, or is that breaking the PFAS protocols?
The testing we did was the...
Up at the podium. Please come to the podium. Sorry.
The pest, the testing that CHA did was the first quarterly sampling.
Okay.
At the sources of the wells.
Okay.
So we're trying to get a picture of where the contamination may be coming from.
Understood.
And once we have that picture, it will then lead us into potential solutions. The quarterly sampling will, will take place at all 10 wells and at the points of entry from the waste, from the water treatment plant into the public system. And so we won't have any compliance numbers until we're, we're finished with the fourth quarterly sampling.
So even, even if you had something for, for, for the media, it wouldn't be of much value other than the fact that it's a, because it's not the rolling averages, which is what's, which, which is what's recognized to establish conformity with the rules?
Yes. It gives us an area to which to focus.
Okay.
Geographically. It could be that you're having PFAS enter just from a few number of wells. Or it could be that all 10 wells. So what we're trying to do is capture the entire picture of the potential for the contamination.
So what we're trying to do is capture, uh, the entire picture of the potential for the contamination. Okay, all right. The one point that, that, that you did make in the presentation, which I think is very important, is that you're going to be reviewing the potential for temporary, uh, processes, equipment and so forth, which I think would, might be able to be, uh, to, uh, get online much quicker, okay? You know, nobody here wants to wait three to five years in order to get a new facility built or whatever be the timeframe. But if there's something on a temporary basis that's available within, within the, the, the systems that we could put in line to start with either the, the, the nano filtration or the, whatever you've, whatever y'all deem is, is the best and the most efficient to, to get us into acceptable limits. I think that, that's a, that, that to me is a key factor, that you'll be willing to, to do that, as well as the elimination, as Councilman Kravitz brought up, of the residual PFAS. Because I think the, the two that I heard of, it's a 4,000-foot well that this, this material gets, gets inserted into, which was another multimillion-dollar task to get that built and dug out. So, okay, all right. Um, I'm going to make a comment to, to the public on this, okay? We're not here to, we're here to, to discuss the resolution to, to do a change order. Their testing issues and, 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 and processes are, are theirs and we've already accepted that. Now we need to do the change order for, um, moving forward so that we can get this work going and get answers back as quickly as we possibly can. We're not here to, to, to disrupt any public comment or any, a- anything of that nature. Um, if there's other questions, please share them with city manager and we'll make sure that they get, get taken care of. Thank you, okay. Uh, any other questions from council? Do we have a resolution? Can we make a motion to the resolution?
All right, move to approve the change order to CHA Consulting, Inc. for the 2025 Water Treatment Facilities Master Plan.
Second.
You have the motion to second, any discussion on, on the motion?
Just a brief comment. Um, I want to come back to something that was said earlier, uh, you know. It, it is true that this issue didn't come to my attention either. Even though I haven't been in office all that long, this problem has been going on while I was in office and I, I didn't, uh, have any awareness of it. It wasn't really relevant in my thinking because it wasn't a, really a topic that I spent any, uh, time reflecting on. And it, it wasn't until this was brought forward that it became something that I was paying attention to. And I, I do apologize for all of the concerns that people are now experiencing. Um, I think the messaging could be better. I've, I've mentioned this previously. I haven't changed my position on that. I, I, I hope that we can improve going forward. And the measure is always whether, when a problem occurs, do people take ownership of it and try to address it as best that they can? Um, and we have the EPA deadline coming, so it is something that we have to deal with one way or another. Um, and I think, I think everyone is sincerely motivated, hopefully, in, in trying to address it. And I'm going to assume that everyone is until I see otherwise. So I just want to comment on that and, and I, I do apologize on my behalf because, um, there are going to be issues that come up that I'm not aware of. This is one of them. People may get hurt, not all harm can be prevented. But when we become aware of an issue that is causing harm, we are moving expeditiously now, I think, to address it. This change order is part of that process. The town hall is part of that process. This has all been moving quite quickly, from what I can see. And I'm actually very happy to see that. And to anyone out there who is concerned about this topic, I'm very worried about it for you and I hope that we can address it and get it resolved. And it is important and you should feel heard and listened to. And clean water is obviously a basic thing, along with roads, police, fire. All of those things are top priorities for me. I've always said that. And, you know, I'm not going to speak for anyone up here because I'm usually in the minority anyway, but that's how I feel about it. And so on my, on my behalf to you, you know, I'm sorry for that and I'm, I'm always paying attention and trying to address things before they become an issue. I'm not going to catch 100% of things. This is one of the things I didn't catch. And I hope that everyone will be satisfied with the, with the result that we get on this topic going forward. So that's, that's my comment on that.
And I believe everybody up here has the same feeling on that issue because we all voted in favor of having the town hall meeting to move it forward and to get it going. Um, I, I, I too have had issues. I don't know if they're from this or from whatever, but, um, I'm, I'm very sensitive to what these issues that are going on. Um, so, and, and likewise, we're moving as quickly as we possibly can on some of this stuff. This change order will go a long way to taking care of that. Um, motion on the floor, the second, all in favor, please, if they can press a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen, look forward to seeing you on the 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren Feltz. Okay, next door, excuse me, council business. First order of business is scheduling a town hall meeting. Um, the, on, on July 5th, this council voted to hold a special, excuse me, to hold a town hall meeting to address the water issue and give the residents an opportunity.
I think it was the 15th.
It was the 15th.
But I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the 15th, I apologize, it was the 15th. I lost a month. Uh, today's the 15th. Um, and, uh, shortly after the meeting, the executive secretary or the executive assistant for the city manager reached out to everybody to come up with potential, uh, dates that would work for everybody's schedule. And I believe that there was, you know, emails that went around saying, okay, what works for everybody? And, uh, we sent, we sent it on, 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 uh, August 11th with a starting time of 6:00 PM. Somewhere along the line, somebody said 6:00 to 8:00. It was my understanding it was going to be however long it took because there's a lot of information. Now, the, there's a question of whether it should be a special meeting or just a regular town hall meeting? And again, there was discussion going back and forth. Um, Mr. Malt, Mr. Buehl, I don't want to put you on the spot. What, what is your recommendation for the format, whether it be a special meeting or just a general?
I believe that the motion was made for it to be a town hall meeting. Now, keep in mind, you know, you'll want to have some sort of format or organization for that.
That's what we're going to talk about tonight.
Moving forward, um, no, it, it can, you know, if the council wants to keep it as a town hall meeting, then all we have to do is, you know, just set it today.
Okay.
Notice it in, at the public hearing.
Okay, well, the discussion, some of the discussion was having a special meeting, having a special city council-type meeting where if we wanted to take action, okay? But I don't believe that there's any, any action going to be taken at that. So we're, we're just looking for consensus among council members that, yes, sir, you raise your hand. Now, go ahead.
No, you, please finish your thought.
Yeah, I lost it anyway. No, it was just, we're not, we're not planning on, excuse me, we're not planning on any action items that night. It's just going to be the, you know, information sharing. This is, this is what appears to be the most critical facet at this point in time. We have information, we need to get to the public. Public has information they want to express with us. So will that, will that cover all of our legal bases and so forth?
Biggest thing is, is we just need to officially notice it and set it tonight.
Okay, and that, that we will do, okay? Um, council members, do you have any questions? What's your comments, what's your thoughts for, for, for any particular format issues?
Go ahead, go ahead. No, please. I, I yield the floor to Councilman Chambers.
All right, so I wasn't here and I didn't listen, I read the minutes, but I didn't listen to the meeting. But our previous town hall meetings, every time we've had one for the last, I don't know how many years, many years, uh, there, there's really been no action done by city council. And the only reason it's called, it would be called a special meeting is for us to be able to do action, make a motion or something. I'm comfortable not making that motion, just, we call it a town hall, do it like we've always done it. Um, you know, we listen, we can make comments, but we can't talk about items because it's not, it won't be a, it's a, would it be a sunshine event?
Well, that's the importance of having it noticed, you know, and announced tonight. Uh, time, place, um, day. Um, so that if you do speak there, you won't run afoul of the sunshine.
Okay, but not calling it a special meeting allows us still to be sunshine?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, we just can't make motions and do any business items?
Exactly, that's, that would be a special meeting.
Okay, I'm good with that.
We can still talk amongst ourselves, you know, in, in, in the course of the meeting.
Correct, yeah, speaking in front of everybody, as long as you notice it tonight, and I can emphasize.
But that's, no, no, that's what we're going to do.
It's just what, it seems to be there's a hang-up on the word special meeting. I don't know why, but I'm good with, I'm good with not making motions at that meeting.
Doing action or anything.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Go ahead, you can start.
Just had a very small comment. The, the motion that we approved at the previous meeting was to have a, a two public information sessions, one in-person and one on Zoom. So I was wondering if we would like to offer an electronic, uh, participation opportunity for people who can't physically make it down to Lightfoot? And we could address that tonight too, potentially.
Mr. Bay, what's your, what, what, what have you planned for that?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. So right now, the, the meeting, again, if, if meets your approval, uh, on August 11th, we are, we, we can't broadcast on cable live from, from the Lightfoot, but we are going to be streaming on YouTube and Facebook. And we will have our staff there taking down the comments and the questions that the people put in the, in the Facebook and YouTube chat functions, if you will, or comment functions. So we'll be taking those, those comments down. Um, if there are questions, I imagine a lot of the questions will be very similar to what the people in, in, in the actual meeting will be saying. Uh, but if there are outlier questions, different things like that, we'll try and address those as well that evening. If we can't address those that evening, for whatever reason, requires additional information, we'll be, bring that information back, we'll probably put it on the city's website or share it here at the council or a combination of both.
Okay, well, you may have said it, I might zone down. If, if there's questions that come up through the electronic media, they'll be able, we'll, we'll, we'll have an opportunity sometime to broach, to broach that?
We are, we are planning to have those questions. We're recording those and taking notes on those questions that evening.
Okay, that's good.
Again, if this meets your approval, if you would like us to do something different.
Understood, okay.
I just want to make sure I understand, there's no current plan to have a fully remote second session? It's just that we're going to offer people an opportunity to watch online for the first session?
If you would, if, if the council would like us to have a fully remote session, we can look at that. We can also explore the opportunity to do Zoom concurrent with the, in, the in-person session. Uh, if that's the direction you'd like us to do.
Since I still have the floor, I just want to ask, in the previous session, we voted to have two sessions. This was the verbatim text, instruct staff to hold two public information sessions, one in-person and one be a Zoom on water quality reporting and testing with the first session to occur within the next four weeks, which means that the second session can occur after four weeks, but it still has to occur.
If that's what you'd like us to do.
Did we not vote on that, so that is what we want you to do?
Well, I thought we were having concurrent. I thought it was going to be at the same time with the, with the, with the opportunity to have it, like, uh, virtual.
I mean, I checked the minutes, it clearly states two sessions, so.
Yes.
Since I wasn't here and I didn't hear the conversation, I think it's important before Councilmember Kravitz is asking the city manager, I think we need to clarify, do we want one or two? It sounds very clear to me in the motion that there's a second Zoom somewhere. But before asking him, let's be comfortable amongst ourselves what we're asking for. I mean, I, I'm just reading, I mean.
Happy to discuss it, I mean.
No, I'm, so.
Well, my interpretation of what we decided is that the later meeting would be follow-up because we're, we're putting this out here now. I know not everybody can come to every meeting, but it will be livestreamed on Facebook and YouTube. And there may be people that watch it then that want a follow-up. And, um, you know, and there also may be additional information that we would want to share. And in lieu of scheduling an in-person meeting, again, where we gather everybody in one place, I mean, because the motion does say a physical town hall meeting and a separate Zoom meeting.
Okay.
I mean, that's what I interpret. If I was here, I would have asked the question of the city with the word Zoom, since that's in the motion, if we have the ability to do a Zoom meeting. I don't know if we do or not.
I don't know the answer to that.
But that's immaterial, that was the motion. So I don't know if we need to answer that today or not because you're right, there, your motion doesn't give a time for a follow-up meeting. I don't know if the city has that technology, but.
Well, we can stay, we're, okay, we can, we can move forward then with the, with the town hall meeting on the 11th. And then, um, schedule is a, a, a virtual meeting shortly after that.
Yeah, virtual is probably better.
Happy to adjust the language. I, I, I don't know what techno- technological capability, I mean, I think Zoom is publicly available.
Vice Mayor had a good thing, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
How, what, what, what's our, what's our technological capabilities as far as a, a secondary Zoom meeting or something, some virtual meeting therefore?
I'm sure we can figure something out. As long, it may not be Zoom, maybe another tool that we have, but it'll, it'll be some virtual capacity and we can schedule this at some point that the council feels is appropriate.
Well, the other thing too is if it's, if it's a, if it's a virtual meeting, we could possibly do it out of, out of the council chambers.
Yeah.
And then not have to worry about the, the limitations of being at Lightfoot because it's not going to be, it's not going to be a walk-in type meeting. It's going to be a, a virtual meeting, somebody could participate that way.
Yep.
Maybe I need to fix my motion from last time and rephrase it to be a virtual meeting.
We could deal with that later.
Sure, okay.
I think, I seconded it, so I, I'll agree to adjust the language from specifically Zoom to virtual.
Okay.
Okay, all right, um, we'll, we'll, we'll start parsing that. Okay, so we're going to start at 6:00 on, on the, the 11th. And it'll go as long as we need to go to get enough public comment. I think it's very important that, um, uh, the, the staff be, be, make a presentation as to where we are, where, how we're getting, where we're going, where we're going to go, whatever you guys from, uh, uh, CHA can, can, what you're, what you're planning on bringing to the meeting. I expect that to be both presentations relatively short so that we can hear public comment and, uh, questions that they may have. Okay, there's council and any issues with that or an agreement with that, staff, anything?
Well, I think we, we've talked about that in the council meeting, everybody has essentially one opportunity for public comment for each item. And I think we talked about that we would give, we would do a first round of questions or comments. And then after, everybody who wants to speak has had an opportunity to speak, then we do a second round and people can come ask additional. And so as they think of questions or as information or somebody else asks a question which triggers another thought, then, so then we can just go for a few rounds. I don't know if we want to establish like, okay, five rounds of questions is enough. I don't, I don't care about that, but I, I think that's a good format.
Well, attrition will take care of that, so people just, they'll get their answers from somebody else. I would, I would hope, I would assume. Um, I think we should, yes, sir.
I was just going to, uh, endorse the fact that most of our town hall, uh, hall meetings, and this one, I think it's important that the staff and our consultants do their presentations first because a lot of the citizens of, that I've talked to, they may not have questions or they may have their questions and they may be answered by the information provided by staff. And then, then there's the opportunity to ask questions, as many questions that the public wants to ask. But I think it's important to get the information out there first, just like we hear a presentation before we ask our question.
Yes, I agree.
I think that's important.
I agree, I mean.
As, as long as there's an open-ended timeframe for, I mean, I guess, like, you know, cut it off at midnight or something if it gets ridiculous, but I mean, I think.
We, we've had some long ones.
Yeah, people, people need to be able to get all of their questions and frustrations out. I think that's very important, that no one feels like they're being cut off or dismissed. So, you know, the 8:00 PM cutoff was something that I was very keyed in on initially. So I'm happy to hear that that's not something anyone here is going to, um, die on in terms of that hill. Um, I have a couple of other comments. I had a very nice exchange today with Amina Khan, who did a lot of our murals in the city. Um, and, uh, she expressed, uh, that she has been putting together flyers for this meeting and distributing these in Arabic to the Muslim community and doing a lot of additional legwork. Um, we are not reaching that community sufficiently. I don't think we also have very much, um, Spanish language communication on this. I looked at some of the social media posts that were shared with me and it seems like right now, the only way that we're promoting this town hall is through social media in English. Um, I'm not a big fan of social media, uh, and I think we need to be more open to other, uh, languages. And so I wanted to ask whether the city manager has any intention of expanding our outreach to include traditional media or, um, direct mail efforts on this or alternatively, uh, or, or in addition to that, using other languages other than English to promote this event?
So the, we have published this event in the city newsletter, on the city website, in social media, on the electronic signs. Am I missing anything, Ms. Rodriguez?
I don't see any signage that we normally see.
Sorry? And we could also send the, the text message, we haven't done that part yet, send a text message. Um, we have not done, when you, I assume you're referring traditional being like newspaper advertisements or?
I'll just get.
I'll just give a quick example. One of the things that Amina said is, to be honest, I'm concerned that the Muslim community may be hesitant to attend, but I'm doing my best to engage our leaders and spread the word. One thing we could do is simply send a letter to the mosques that we are familiar with in the area, informing them. For example, you can sometimes just send five or 10 letters and reach a large audience if those letters are correctly done and go to the right people, just as a thought, so.
We can, actually, I'm looking at the police chief here, because the police chief, I don't, former Chief Halbanan, I'm sure Chief Staley, has pretty deep connections in the Muslim community, the lead representatives there, so I'm sure we can, he's nodding his head, that we can get the word out directly to them. Maybe not a letter, maybe we can just send an email or phone calls, and they'll spread the word that way. As far as the use of other languages, that's really, I'd ask for council's direction on that one, as to, you know, if that's what you'd like us to, we can do that. Right now, there's a Google Translate function, I believe, on the city's website, you can go through Google, and that technology has improved dramatically, or it was several years ago, so people can translate into a variety of languages if they wanted to see, you know, what's going on right now with this issue. But since I've been here, we've not had a process of translating other other documents or things like that. So, again, the council wants us to move in that direction, just let me know.
What's, what's the thoughts of council? Other, other members?
I think we need to get the word out in all the languages we can. I don't know if we have the translation functions going. If that works, that's great. Sending letters to the prominent areas, that's great. Direct mailing to every resident, I don't know yet. I wouldn't know the cost, but that, it's not really that.
It's hard to do that.
Yeah.
So. You started with timing.
About $9,000.
You know that, so, no.
The, the police signs that go on the side of the road, do we have those deployed anywhere?
I don't see them anywhere.
Police signs are not deployed right now. All right, so we could, if you're suggesting that we want to do that, we could use those as well.
Deploy those, or those are.
Yep.
At, at our different spots.
Sure.
Reach, reach some more. Okay, so you're going, Mr. Bay, you're, you're going to reach out to the Muslim community in some capacity with a, with a letter inviting them to the thing and potentially?
Well, if you could just, can you just make, not make it specifically a letter, because we may get more action just by directly having a call.
Whatever, yeah, give them a call, exactly, exactly.
But we will communicate.
QR code. Do a QR code on the letter and link it to your website in different languages. It's done.
Could work.
Just on the floor, Mr. Kravitz.
I yield the floor.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes.
I do have a question. So normally, at a council meeting, we do set a time limit on public comment at, at one set. So I do want to request that we set, that we do set a time limit on, on, on individuals' comment per round. So just because I want to make sure that we have enough time, that we, that we get a lot of different people able to comment and, and do the same thing where if somebody wants to delegate their time, for example, just set a three-minute time for every initial, you know, for every person who wants to comment, and then they can come and comment again and again and again, but that way we get through the comments, but then also make it so that people can delegate their time, the same way we would do at city council, where if somebody wants to delegate their time to another person, they can. And that, but I, I just, I'm just concerned, because I know that sometimes when people aren't very comfortable with public speaking, they may get up and not really know how to wrap their comments up, and then you've got other people out there kind of waiting for their turn, so that's just my thought.
My only concern, I agree with you to your point. I, I couldn't hold my breath three minutes, but if I was up there, it goes real fast. I would, I would suggest a five-minute for the, for the first, for the, for the rounds. And again, five minutes, 12 people an hour, we have, we have 50 people there, and you're looking four hours to to get through everybody within five minutes.
That's assuming everybody will come.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Comment on that?
When I'm done, when I'm done. And then, but, you know, once we, everybody's had their first round, if there's still more to say, or you have other questions, or other, we'll do it again, and we'll keep doing it till everybody's, everybody's taken care. But if it's open-ended, and we have somebody up there who's rambling on for five, 10, 15 minutes, we're not going to get anything done. We're not going to hear anything, and after a while, it just, you know, you know, I'm sorry we're having this issue. Nobody wants this to happen. Nobody's sitting here saying, how can we, how can we mess up our, our, our water system? We're having, we're doing everything we can and everything we know how to deal with this, and this, you know, we're, 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 we're not professionals up here. Everybody here has other, other jobs and other things that we do, so it's, we're, I, I think I can speak, everybody's doing the absolute best that they can do, and, yeah, your turn.
You hit on my comment, it was, everyone always talked about public comment, but there's public questions, too. A lot of the public is coming to ask questions or hear what's going on and potential, what we're doing and procedures and all that. So it's questions and comments from the public.
So I still, my concern is that people, when people come, it's, when, and when you have comments or questions that you want to ask and you don't hear them asked, it's very hard to listen to somebody speak for five. Five minutes is actually a very long time at a public comment setting, and I'm trying to think, I'm just trying to think of the people sitting in the audience wanting to be able to get to their questions as well. So I'm just thinking, three minutes is, is a pretty long amount of time for, plus allowing people to delegate their time, you, you still have, and then, and it's not like when we're doing just public comment, where you get one opportunity to speak to every agenda item or, or at the public comment time, you, you're able to come up and ask another question after that. So I just think it would help keep, keep things moving so that people have the opportunity that, that, that more people have an opportunity to speak. And then I would like it to be possible, and I don't know if this is a, a good format or not, but, I mean, they're going to be asking questions, so somehow we have to be able to answer the questions. So I don't know if we want to have everybody ask their questions or be back and forth where people are asking questions and then we're able to, I'm, I'm thinking not we, I'm thinking like our consultants, able to answer some of the questions right then and there, or I don't want to wait till the end of public comment, or wait till the end of the first round and then try to answer. I, that, I don't know what would be the best flow for the meeting.
What's your thoughts, Mr. Bay? One minute.
Well, ultimately, this is a council decision. If, I, I think trying to address every single speaker that comes up and trying to, it's going to be difficult, challenging, more challenging, whereas waiting to a certain point, that, you know, you, council, you can decide what, you know, what that point is, and then trying to, we're going to be taking notes and trying to kind of broadly address the questions that were raised in one kind of round of answers, and then if you want to open up again and go through that round again and get to the point we can answer, that might be the simplest way to keep the flow and get through as many people as possible, because otherwise, to your point, council member, you know, that will definitely take more time for the next person to get their, their questions on, on the record, so.
You guys go be there for a while on Monday night? With your sleeping bags. Okay, any other, yes, sir.
I just have a brief comment. It's not a council decision how to structure this town hall. I'm sorry, I strenuously, strenuously disagree with that. Staff has been instructed to organize a town hall. I'm happy to give input, and, but it is not our decision to say everyone speaks through this. It is your discretion to arrange the town hall. You have been given a clear instruction from the city council. There is no reason to bring this for another vote about how to structure the town hall to the city council, and so it's not a council decision. If we don't have to vote on it, it is not a council decision. And in my view, we've said very clearly to have a town hall, and the organization of that has been entrusted to staff, and whether it's three minutes or five minutes or seven minutes or 10 minutes per speaker, or how many speakers, or how long it goes, that is a staff decision, and if we are satisfied with it, then no further consultation is required. And if we're not satisfied with it, then we'll find out after the town hall, and maybe we'll adjust then, or we'll ask for another town hall, or people will express their dissatisfaction with it. But at the end of the day, I think it's good to have this consultation. I think it's great that we're being solicited for our input on this, but it is not a council decision what structure this town hall will take. That is my view. I just wanted to get it out there, so.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments?
No, I just, that's my input on the organization.
Okay. Now, I did promise you guys, the two, two, two individuals, Laura and Ms. Tara, that you could come up and address.
One at a time, or can we both come?
One at a time. Well, I don't care, whatever, whatever's easiest for you guys.
Public comment, so.
Huh?
Public.
Which is that? It's public comment.
Yeah, it's public comment, yeah.
Laura Pulser, hi again. Okay. It's really great hearing this discussion. This, just, just thank you. This is, this is wonderful to hear. I have a suggestion I'd like to make. I agree with your point. I agree with Eric's point. I, I, I think, and I don't speak for all residents, but I think I, I know where a lot of people stand on it, and I don't feel like this is, if people needed to air their grievances, we kind of did that at the last council meeting. The room was filled, everybody aired their grievances. I don't know, we're ready for answers, we're, we're ready, we're ready to, we're ready to work to, to get this fixed. So while we do have questions about the water processes, having the presentation, the people do the presentations, I think is, is great if they're short. So I would suggest maybe doing, if you do the rounds, I think that's great, but maybe limiting it to, a person gets to, if they need to air their grievances, you know, they get, you know, two minutes, and then two or three questions per, per round, and they can come back to their round of just questions. So I think having meaningful dialogue to ask a question and then get an answer is going to be the most productive thing. It'll keep us on point, on target, getting the answers to the questions right away. People, you ask a question, you want to hear an answer. It's, it's kind of a bummer when you're sitting back there and you, you come up here for three minutes and you talk and you, you ask questions, but they never get answered by the end of, of, of the session. So I think having an open dialogue of questions and answers, limiting to two or three questions per person, after having a couple minutes to, to speak, to present where they stand, if that's what they feel that they need to do, but to keep it moving along. So that's all I got. Ms. Tara is ready.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tara?
I don't really have anything. I just appreciate it.
I have to ask you to come up.
I just appreciate it. Um, I, I do think that having the other avenues will be great. It is the first day of school, which is going to be tough for a lot of parents, so I think having that will be great. Also, I have noticed at past town halls, there has been signage throughout the city. Are we going to do that, like town hall meeting signs? Was that an individual who did that, or is that something you all did? Because if y'all want to do it, make me some signs, and I'll put them everywhere you want me to do that. But, I, because I've seen them before, so I don't know if that might be a way to do it as well.
I, I've been here a while. I don't know if the city has ever done town hall signs. What we see through our city sometimes is Hillsborough County signs.
I'm wondering if that, I've only seen, like, signs that say town hall, and I just.
Usually, that's Hillsborough County. I don't recall.
Oh, okay.
We might have done that, and I know Mr. Mayor made a note, so he's going to be checking into that.
I don't know if that's something that you want to do, but I'm Tara, you can get with me at any time, and I will definitely do that for you if you need me to. I have no problem, but.
Follow the codes on signs.
Well, you get me the signs, I'll go around. I mean, I'm already spending most of my days going around talking to people anyway, so. But that's all, no, I didn't really, didn't have much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Love, come on. What do you got?
One of the thing I was thinking about from the days ago Hillsborough, was they put before, at the early part of the meeting, they put like a display out of the information that they had, like, for example, maybe the consultants could do that, and then go around before you go to the questions, and maybe the consultants could answer them quietly and then start your town hall type meeting, as a possibility, if that can be done.
Well, we're going to have the present tip, but, okay, your point's that if there's anything that they want to put up.
In other words, they can go around.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure we have enough walls.
Mr. Bay, you have enough to proceed? Comfortable with it?
Yes, yes, and I will, I'll send a note to the council, just taking all this in and with a format over the next day or so.
Formalizing.
Yep.
Very good. All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions on this? Okay, let's move forward. Okay, any other council carryover business that needs to be brought up?
I do have one item.
Yes, ma'am.
Carryover, no?
Well, it is carryover, for sure, and it, it does have to do with social media, because I do want to make sure that people watching understand why council cannot comment on social media posts. If you do, if you, the only thing I can comment is to please watch the council meeting or please contact your council person, because it's not, we don't archive the random social media posts. We archive our city social media post, and the sunshine law requires that you, that council members, all of our communication that's written must be archived. So, so when you, so if people are commenting on anything that they, they see on, on social media, which I understand is a very common way that, that people exchange information, I do read them, and then I try to bring up what I've seen asked here at this time and that, and ask the questions, but I just can't comment on them. So I just, I, I say that periodically, just so that people watching understand, that's it.
Yeah, that's a ditto on that. Can't comment.
I, I, I think it's very important that, that a lot of the residents, and the ones here I know, have heard this before, but if you're listening or watching, you know, if you have a question, call us, email us directly. We can answer the questions one-on-one, but I, you know, I read every, I read the Temple Terrace bulletin board, I read it, okay? I see the comments, but I can't answer them directly, because then I'm expressing my opinion, and we violated sunshine right there. And sunshine, just for everybody's edification, if I talk to any other council member outside of a, of a, a duly noted scheduled meeting, that's a sunshine violation on current business.
Oh, business.
Future, future business, future business.
Like, how would you, they?
Correct. Okay. If I discuss an issue with other council members outside of a duly noticed meeting, that's a sunshine violation. Me talking to the city manager, to the city attorney, to the city clerk, that's not a sunshine, excuse me, that is not a sunshine violation. So I just so, just wanted to clarify that with everybody. Okay, any other, any other council carrier of business? Any other, any new business or board reports?
I have two bonus items today. I reached out to an individual on the county commission, and I got a reply back on Davis Road. So this is a county road that a lot of people have expressed dissatisfaction with in the past. This is for your benefit and for everyone else who might be listening. Photos of this road would be helpful, according to the legislative assistant of the individual I contacted, and emails or letters from residents. So any of the people who've been here previously who expressed dissatisfaction with Davis Road, if you are listening, send me photos or emails or letters, I will pass them along, and I'm also trying to get the, the confirmation of the repaving schedule for Davis Road. So that's that one. And then this is Temple Terrace specific, second item and final one. I looked at the 1,100-page stormwater report that was circulated recently, and I just wanted to know if there's any update on this pumping station at Temple Terrace Highway. I noticed that in the 2023 ranking, it scored the lowest of all the pumping stations, which was a little bit alarming to me, and I know that that was two and a half, some odd years ago. There was no backup generator there. Um, there was no backup generator there. I just wanted to know if there is some update or perhaps if we could be updated on the condition of that pumping station at the next council meeting. Uh, I'm not expecting any answers on that right now, obviously. And the other, uh, sorry?
Is that our pumping station or the county?
County.
Uh, county, potentially, yes. And I think there's one that is under our jurisdiction, which is Gibson Avenue.
Okay.
Um, and I think that one potentially, I might be wrong on that. No? I misread the report? That's fine.
Gibson Avenue, where is that?
Not, not ours? Okay. Um, because that one also is pretty critical to us, so I wonder, both of these stations seem to be, according to that report, again, which incorporates older information, so I don't know if that's still current, both of those stations seem to be not our stations, but also very, very significant for our well-being in any sort of stormwater event. And so I'm curious if there's now a backup generator at the Temple Terrace Highway pumping station, for example, uh, and, uh, you know, what, what the condition is of the Gibson Avenue pumping station as well. Uh, this was a new station in the 2023 ranking, so it had a 0.0 score, because it was new, so they hadn't actually assigned a score to it. And I'd be curious if there's any information about the condition of the station. I think going into the rest of hurricane season, it would be wise. I know that we've done a lot, we've acquired generators, et cetera, um, and it would just be comforting to know that the county is also doing it with that level of, uh, intensity and, and if there's any obstacle to finding this out, I'm happy to work with whatever contacts I may have, so, yeah.
Vice Mayor, I have a, I have a question along this. And that is, I, I thought that once this stormwater analysis, the study was finished, completed, that we were going to have somebody actually come here and give us a presentation on their findings, recommendations, and improvements.
I can, uh, I'll reach out to the county to see if that's, that, that's an option for them to, to make a presentation to the city council.
Okay, and then, oh, oh, in keeping with what council member Kravitz said, that we discussed previous to them performing this study, um, but after the hurricanes, that some of our overflow was caused by county systems, and we need, we do need to have some sort of assurance that they're addressing what needed to be addressed at the stations that they have that actually serve predominantly Temple Terrace residents. So however, we can get, you know, the, the confirmation for the questions that he's requested.
No, we're looking, we're looking at, made notes, we're looking into that, bringing answers back to you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Where is Gibson Avenue? They're near us. Where is it?
Oh, before I get, forget, sorry, one, one more thing about the public comment earlier about the Airbnbs. Um, I, I have been looking into that issue for a number of months now, I want to mention. Um, so Pinellas County introduced legislation a little while ago, strict, making rules more strict for Airbnbs in their county, and the Association of Airbnb Operators there threatened to sue them, but they have not yet been sued. So I was working on a, um, uh, exploration of what we could tighten without running afoul of the state preemption of this topic, uh, with my staff, but we haven't processed it yet because we're waiting for this lawsuit to potentially be filed. And then when it is filed, we're going to look and see what exactly are the issues that they're raising in that lawsuit, so that we can steer around those and see whether there's still anything left after that that we could tighten in terms of the regulation of Airbnbs, which is something that I'm very keen on and have been for a long time, but I haven't been able to move forward on that yet because of the issues I just mentioned. So, um, fully sympathetic with that, and I just want to also point out, all the Airbnbs in Temple Terrace, if you operate an Airbnb, you are still subject to the code of ordinances here, and you have to mow your lawn, and there are occupancy restrictions, et cetera, et cetera. So I encourage all residents, if you run into a situation where you have 20 people in one house, um, please let code enforcement know. I always forward those to code enforcement and, uh, you know, I take note when I'm out canvassing about who's next to an Airbnb, and there are a number of people who are next to them and they're very unhappy, and so my sympathies go out to all of you, and I hope we're all spared further Airbnbs, because I completely agree with the analysis from earlier. This is a commercial use in a residential area, and it shouldn't be, but it is, so.
Any comment, Mr. Miller?
No.
Okay. All right. Any other new, yes, sir?
I have two items. Okay, first item, uh, if you know or don't know, in the hallway of City Hall, uh, at the entrance, uh, there's a small art gallery, and that's a rotating art gallery, and this morning the show changed. So when you walk out, go the second hallway out and look at all the nice artwork. That is from local artist Mike Knapp. Uh, the first, uh, last two months was our local artist, mural artist Terry Claren, who had on display. That came down and now Mike Knapp's is up. It's great artwork, uh, for residents out there in TV land and everything. It's no charge to come into City Hall and, and look at that artwork. It's really cool, and it'll be up through the end of the year. So that's one item. The second item, it was one thing on my, uh, historic fact trivia questions that I forgot about, one question. So I'll ask it again, I'm sorry if it's not appropriate, Mr. Vice Mayor, but does anybody know the significance of this date, August 5th? Okay, it's my wife's birthday. Happy birthday, Beth. And I'll be home for dinner sometime.
Happy birthday, Beth. Thank you.
You should have told me half an hour ago.
The, when you talk about Mike Knapp, Mike Knapp has been very involved with the city for a long, long time. If you go back to, go back to the, um, uh, old beacons that were published in 95 through like 97, every week he offered an editorial cartoon that were talking about things going on in the city and, and going on with this, the council that was in, in power at that time. And, uh, if you ever get bored, look it up in the, in, in the archives of the, um, uh, the library. It, uh, some of them are quite humorous, to say the least, of what, of some of the antics that were going on. Okay, moving forward, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. So in the backup this evening, you have the third quarter reports for, on the council priority goals, the budget goals, the ARPA projects. Uh, we also have the financial report and a report on the city's investments prepared by the finance director. I'm happy to take questions.
I just had one, anybody have any questions of, of the city manager? I just have one. Any, I want to turn dirt. We got to turn dirt. Any, any, when?
We are, sure, on the White Way project, we are close, within a week or two of breaking ground on the White Way project?
Yes.
Yes. Um, on the, uh, the EOC project, that one is, uh, taking a little bit more longer than we anticipated. That one has a little bit of longer timeframe for us to work with, um, but it's just the process, because it's not, it wasn't prepared as a design build, it was prepared as design mid-build. Um, it's just a little bit longer. So, but we're working on it, and I know the chief is, is on top of it every day trying to get this thing going.
Regarding the White Way, there is a, there's a lot of, uh, comments or numerous comments floating around about the tree in the front. That might be something that we could, we should address if we could, in, 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 uh, social media to help the residents understand the who, why, what, where regarding that tree.
Can I try to address some of it?
Sure, sure.
So the, the tree on the property was, we, we brought this up at city council last year at some point.
Agreed.
Asked for the council, basically explained that in order to put the building in the right, in the right place and, and design the building, the tree was always going to be behind whatever building, it was either going to be in where the building is or behind the building. Um, and having it behind the building at the time was, was not feasible, it wasn't going to work in terms of the site layout and the site was going to encroach. Um, as a result, the direction was, let's go ahead and we can, we can take the tree out. But I made a commitment that, just like every private developer has to do when, when they encounter this situation, if they can't save a tree, that they have to pay a fee, and our commitment was that we were going to pay that same fee to the city's tree fund. So the project has paid, uh, if I remember offhand, $54,000, uh, to the city's tree fund, uh, to, for our part, uh, in terms of the tree that was, that was, that is planned to be removed.
Thank you. Uh, I just thought it was important that, so that the public can hear what, what actually is going on with that issue. Okay. Um, any other questions? Period be done.
I just have one.
Oh.
And it's just for the public to know that, um, any of these reports that are in the city manager's report are part of the agenda package online, so they're, they are accessible for the public to open the documents and, and see them. That's it.
Okay, very good. Mr. City Attorney?
Just one thing, and I'm sorry to go back to the scheduling of the town hall meeting. Did we actually make a motion and second the date, time, place, and subject to that?
No. Okay, we'll need to do that. Okay. So it's, we, due to, due to, um, noticing purposes or noticing requirements, uh, we need to, we need a motion, uh, for the date, time, and location.
Subject.
And subject.
Okay. You want to, wait? I just have a question for the city attorney in, in the room, if I could. For the future motions that I may make, is it my understanding now that if staff is asked to execute a particular project within a set timeframe, for example, four weeks, and that is presumably within the discretion of staff to set the rest of the details, do I need to actually specify in my motion not to do something within four weeks, but to do it on a date that is specific and a time that is specific, if I want that motion to have validity and legal effect? Because my understanding is at the previous city council meeting, staff was delegated authority to organize and execute a town hall meeting, one being within four weeks from the date of the motion. And so I assumed that staff would then select a date and select a mode of execution for this town hall meeting. Now, if it is the legal opinion of the city attorney and apparently of the city manager, that that motion was somehow insufficient, then I'd like to know exactly how, so that I don't repeat the mistake in the future.
Well, if, I don't think your motion was insufficient or anything. You were asking-
No, no.
Sorry, Brian. I don't think your motion was insufficient in that what you were doing was asking them to s, come up with a date for it, for us to have the town hall meeting. But in order to have the, the town, the actual meeting, um, we, you, we need to go ahead and officially notice it. Otherwise, city council members are not going to be able to speak at it if they want to speak. Um, if one does speak and there's more there, they'd have to leave. It's just for your all's protection to be at that meeting. You don't want to have anybody speaking at an unnoticed meeting. So that's why I'm asking you to go ahead and mo, and, uh, now that we have the date and the time, to go ahead and officially notice that town hall.
Was there something preventing the city manager from determining a date and then noticing the meeting?
The city council has to set the meeting, not the city manager. The actual town hall meeting needs to be set by council, date, time, subject.
Thank you. Now we're getting to the core of it. So in the future, it's not sufficient for me to motion for a thing to happen within four weeks at the discretion of staff, I have to actually determine the date.
If you can, yeah. I mean, I thought the way this was done, you, we needed to have a date that was convenient and open and everything else, it had to be established.
I just thought it would be better to offer a four-week timeframe that people could select from.
Let's move this on, this is getting-
My understanding is what we did is instruct staff to, to-
Come up with a-
Organize it, find the date that works for everybody, set the location, and now they did that, so now tonight we are confirming and establishing that, accepting staff, what staff put together. We are accepting it, setting the official date, because when we, there's no way at that motion, at that meeting, you couldn't have said August 11th at 6:00 PM, because you didn't know at that time, is everybody going to be able to make that meeting? Is Lightfoot open at that meeting? Is it, you know, we, we wouldn't have known at a time certain.
I, I understand the concern. I'm, I'm sensitive about this, because we worked hard to try and get this thing to happen, and especially for me, it's not always easy to get something to happen. And now I'm seeing that it takes two votes for me to get something to happen, whereas a lot of other people get things done without any vote at all. So that's a little bit my issue here, just to point it out.
My comment.
Yes.
So I, I got to disagree with you, because we've had times before where we've talked about having a, a town hall meeting or something, and we've all had our calendars and we've agreed on a time at the D S, and part of the motion had the time and the day listed. So it's not, you didn't do anything wrong. I'm sorry you're sensitive about something that really is no big deal, but, uh, we've done it both ways, so I think this is very appropriate. So I'm going to make a motion, if that's okay, Mr. Vice Mayor. Uh, I move that we schedule a, a town hall meeting on Monday, August 11th at 6:00 PM at the Lightfoot Recreation Center on 56 and, uh, White Way, uh, the subject being our water system.
Second.
Your motion's second.
That's sufficient, sir.
It's period to be done. All in favor, please, a second. Aye?
Aye.
Reposed. Motion carries.